Good evening. Just like being in school, I came after the bell rang, so. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's a capital planning committee and...
Is that on that mic?
If David wants to call.
Yep. Does somebody on the school committee want to make a motion to call the school committee meeting to order? The motion by Ms. Peters, second. Second by Ms. Hart. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Okay, ready to roll.
Alright, so we're here this evening because as we know, there's been a lot of discussion and banter back and forth about future uses for the Memorial School. As you know, about a year ago, at least, the selectmen formed the capital planning committee, and part of the charge was to look at our long-term needs, capital needs, and what we can do to try to find a resolution to those needs. And for the past year, and I promised David when he got on the capital planning committee, excuse me, I keep moving my arm, I have kind of a stiff arm tonight, but...
Need a physical therapist?
Yeah. But I've tried everything.
Is that mic on?
I was thinking the same thing.
So, it wasn't a committee forum to beat up on the school committee, I promised David...
Is that Michael and John?
Could you turn the mic up, please?
The one time I don't do is this thing on.
It's on for cable, but it's not on for us.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll talk louder then.
It's not on for us.
It wasn't a committee set up to try to beat up David every couple weeks saying, you know, "What about the Memorial School? What about the Memorial School?" That wasn't the purpose of it, and I'll tell you right now that the board of selectmen and the capital planning committee understands the role of the school committee and the superintendent, and your charge about providing the best service, best level of education to the children in town that you can. I believe that's true, I respect it, and if I was in your seat, I'd be doing the same thing. However, what we're faced with on the capital planning committee is, some of our needs we had to get into was a major renovation of Town Hall, a number of different buildings that we look at, we take a step back and say, "Well, maybe if the school doesn't need the Memorial School, we could do X, Y, and Z in there and save us X number of million dollars on capital outlay." And so, we've been kind of just treading water and just, I know the school did a study a couple of years ago, he came back, he didn't think you could give up the space needs at the Memorial. Our charge on the capital planning committee is to do our due diligence and once again, go back to you, perhaps have you reassess it, or come together with us to form a joint study, hire independent consultants to look at the needs, not just space needs that you did before, but space, financial, and how it would affect the curriculum. So, there's three areas. It's not just about, there's extra rooms there, it's about what will be the best for all of us. And as I said earlier, the school committee has your section, that your charge is to provide the best that you can for what you're in charge of. On the government side, on the selectman's side, everybody fits under the same tent. And we just want to see, if it doesn't work out, the capital planning committee can move forward and come up with other recommendations, but until we get some definitive answers, one way or the other, we're kind of in a holding pattern. So, thanks for being here this evening. I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Phil Mneos, and then we'll come back and have questions after, okay? Thank you.
I'm gonna hand these over. We'll pass them down. We have a bunch of copies here, and I don't think we have enough for the entire room. They'll be posted tomorrow. I'm gonna give these to the school committee first, and then after they have their copies, everybody else will have what's left.
This will be posted on the town website tomorrow. I'm a little nervous because I hope I've got the spelling correct on everything, and I'm sure the grammar is not up to par, so forgive me for that. I'll wait till everybody, wait till the handouts are distributed.
Debbie, I know Debbie needs one for her purposes of notes, and Alan for press after that.
Never take the teacher out of the classroom, Kim. You're handing it out just a bit. That's right, that's right. Did I say it right, did I get it? Alright, it's totally taken me a while since years, but I've been working on it, seven and a half, Dr. Terrell. Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Alright, first of all, thank you very much for having the opportunity to make a presentation. I think John captured, John Riley captured the essence of where we're headed, which is, the presentation this evening talks about looking forward and some of the challenges that the town faces, and the need to develop some strategies to address those challenges because those challenges directly bear on what resources we're able to provide to all departments. So, as you get into it, hopefully this is... So, basically, the town is facing two broad challenges financially. Our operating revenue is constrained to about a 3% annual growth pattern. So, if you look at where we are on the revenue side of the budget, you look at the components of our revenue side of the budget, for the next several years at least, you're not going to see much more than about a 3% growth rate there. Our state aid is driven by two major components. One is Chapter 70. Chapter 70 is driven almost exclusively by enrollment growth, and on the general government side, there's general restricted aid, unrestricted aid, that has been very, very flat over the years. And if anybody's watched the budget presentations, or if you go to the town website and look at the budget presentation that was presented in early February, you can see the historic trend lines, you can see that our state aid today is back at 1995 levels, as an example. And the capital planning committee, which was established about a year ago now, we made our first, we made a presentation at town meeting in May, and it was established about six months prior to that, went through a process of querying all town departments to identify the types of capital projects that would, should be addressed over the course of the next five years. And they basically broke down into four major categories. They broke down into infrastructure, seawalls, roads, for an example. They broke down into buildings, Town Hall, library, even some school department items on the building list, you know, renovation of HVAC systems, things of this nature. They had a technology component, which was actually the smallest component of the four components. And then we had kind of a general equipment component that had rolling stock for vehicles, public works vehicles, things of this nature. The largest, two largest categories, which should not be a surprise, were infrastructure items and buildings. And both of those categories are, you know, what you would typically call generational events, meaning that, you know, you build a seawall once every 60, 70 years, you don't have to rebuild it, hopefully, if they build it right, you don't rebuild it every five years. Public building is the same way. So, Town Hall, for instance, was built in 1922. Memorial was built in 49, and then rebuilt or renovated substantially in the late 90s. The high school that we're in right now was built in 58 and received a substantial renovation in '06, and Jacob School was built in the early 70s and received its expansion and renovation and expansion just a few years ago. So, those are not events, you know, the rebuilding of a building and seawalls and things of this nature aren't things that you do every five years, there are things that you do, you know, generationally. So, you know, the people of Hull 40, 50, 60 years ago, and 100 years ago, in some instances, you know, stepped up and said, "We have to do this," and figured out a way to do it. And we're kind of at that juncture right now with some of the capital. The other aspect that the capital plan kind of illuminated for folks was that, you know, there's an annual capital need. And there's a growing IT need, for instance, in the last two years, in FY, this current fiscal year, and next fiscal year, was the first time we saw a significant, for instance, capital infusion into the schools for IT, for just for the iPads, as an example. So, as departments, you know, get a bigger footprint in the IT world, you're gonna see, you know, more investment in IT for a variety of different reasons, and then that is also gonna lead to the requirement for more support for that IT. So, my suspicion is, is that at some point, you know, the schools are gonna, you know, have to beef up the current IT staff as the number of platforms that are out there and in the school department and the demand for help services increases. But, you know, that's something that is natural when you start migrating to a more robust IT environment. So, those are the two kind of big challenges facing all of us. And we need to develop a strategy to address the challenges, and saving on both capital and operational costs would allow other activities to be funded. Because when everything is said and done, we're pretty much in a zero-sum game. We have to present a balanced budget every single year. So, when we make a choice to spend money on one item, inevitably it means we're not spending the money on something else. And it's a constant, you know, juggling of choices. The school committee is constantly juggling choices, the selectmen are constantly juggling choices, the public is constantly confronted with the fact that we're juggling choices. You know, they look at the roads and they say, "Why can't the roads be fixed?" Well, the roads may not be able to be fixed as well as you would like because we have to fund a new engine in the fire department, or there's some initiative that's going on in the school department, or something along those lines. So, that's the real challenge that we face in the local government level. We have a constrained revenue environment, we have a whole host of demands that are upon the policymaking bodies, that they then have to translate into operational directives to staff, and then staff has to figure out, "How do I get as much of that policy activity accomplished with a finite set of resources?" Very, very difficult environment, very challenging environment, and Hull, it's particularly difficult because we're about 97% residential, we really don't have any land that's available for new developments, anything that's gonna be happening with land use is gonna be redevelopment of existing property. It's not like Plymouth, which has, you know, huge, you know, vacant areas where you can pop in another 400, 500 homes in an area, or things of this nature. So, we have a very, very difficult environment to operate in. For 350-plus years, the town has found a way to do it because people have rolled up their sleeves, worked together, and tried to find a solution. This building is an example of people doing that 10 years ago. We all got together, we said, "We have to do something with the three schools in this community, they're in difficult shape," and the community came together, put together a plan, and moved forward to find a solution that made a lot of sense for the community. So, one concept that is out there, in order to try to bridge the gap between the 3% reality that we're facing from a revenue perspective, and the 5% demand model that is there for the large departments, schools, police, fire, public works, those four departments consume about 80% of the operational budget. Those departments are in that 5% world. The very small departments can live in the 3% world because they're basically one or two folks and paperclips. But the departments that have huge operational demand upon their services have a lot of difficulty living in the 3% world. And as a matter of fact, the FY 15 budget that's now going through process, you know, it's a 3.28% increase, for instance, for the school department, that's, and the superintendent and the school committee did not ask for a big increase. They really didn't, they were very, very austere in their request. But the fact of the matter is, we can't even get to the austere level of the request. They asked for about a 4, I think a 4% increase, or a 4.1% increase, which is not a particularly aggressive increase for a school department. So, when you look at the world that we're living in, people are trying to make it work, and we have to ultimately make it work because we have to have a balanced budget. But we can't make it work as effectively as possible if we're arguing with each other and not working collaboratively with each other. So, we have to, because we're up against it, figure out a collaborative work model that's gonna make sense on a go-forward basis. The consolidation concept says, "Well, let's figure out a way, is there a way to examine consolidating our footprint? We have lots of buildings around town, some of the buildings are in conditions that are gonna need to be addressed one way or the other. We are going to have a council on aging in this town. That building needs to be addressed. We are going to have a library in the town, one way or the other, there's gonna be a library in town. There's going to be a Town Hall in town. It doesn't go away because the building's in bad condition." So, the question that confronts us is, do we continue operating the way we have for the last 100 years, in the same footprint? And if we do that, there's gonna be a price for that. The cost to renovate Town Hall with the police station under it and the full renovation of that building is about $24 million, and we have that report from AI3. The question is, is do you want to spend $24 million on that building and the bond and the interest that's associated with it, the annual payment that's associated with that? Or is there a way to do it more effectively, and any money we save on the difference between the $24 million and something else can then be diverted to either capital need or operational need? Because that's what our problem is. So, the question is, is, you know, can you shrink your footprint, which helps you to avoid renovating multiple, costs of renovating multiple sites, and creates opportunities for operational efficiencies? Concept says you would consolidate functions at Memorial School, Town Hall offices, council on aging, library, administrative functions of the SOAR and Light Department. The school would consolidate activities into two buildings from three, the high school and Jacobs, or in the alternate, keep a presence in Memorial to consolidate some functions. So, keep in mind, this is the concept, we're not advocating this outcome, we're saying, "This is the discussion, this is the parameters of the discussion." There are basically four categories of issues that need to be studied, if you're interested in looking at this concept. There's a physical-space analysis, how much of Memorial School would be needed by all of those functions? What would happen to the school department? How do you consolidate three schools into two schools? You know, how does that actually work? We know from a design factor that Jacob School on paper was designed for 785 students. We know that the high school was designed for about 485 students, and I think Memorial School was designed for 350 students. But that's on paper. Is that practical still? So, those things would be examined under a physical-space analysis. Finances would have to be examined. What are the positives and the negatives? What are the, what's the value to consolidation? What is it, what do you save? You might have expenditures that you don't foresee right now, that need to be examined. So, what is the true value of this from a financial perspective? Operational needs, which is really, that really has to focus almost exclusively on the school department. Can this concept work educationally and operationally? Is it possible? We know there are some communities that have consolidated from three schools to two, or have taken, they've gone from K to six, or in seven to 12. That may not be right for this community, that needs to be studied, that needs to be looked at. And I would argue that, and as others have said on the committee, and as we have said in our committee, as we've had this discussion and it's kind of evolved, that, you know, that's the key driving factor and the key driving determination. If you end up with a solution set that actually makes the situation worse for the children of the community, you can't pursue that solution set. We didn't invest in these buildings because we wanted three beautiful buildings, we invested in the buildings because we wanted a better educational outcome for the children of Hull. That was the purpose of the investment in the buildings. It wasn't to have nice space, it was to have a better educational outcome. So, that, in my mind, is the single most important factor that needs to be looked at. But it has to be looked at within the confines of these four points. And then there are legal issues. People have raised the question of, what would be the SBAB's reaction to this? How does this concept fit into the town's acceptance of money from the school building Assistance Bureau? And what does that mean? What does the law say? Did the town, did the town execute agreements that require us to do certain things? And even if we didn't execute such an agreement, and we did this, we still have to understand what SBAB's reaction would be to it. So, those are kind of the four areas that would need to be studied, in my estimation. So, in particular, you know, physical-space analysis, you know, I kind of walked through those, the operational needs, in terms of space needs for various user, renovation requirements for schools and general government, what would the grade configuration be? Operational needs, what strategies can be developed for a successful plan? That, in my mind, is a question that you would ask whoever is doing the educational analysis. How would you structure a successful plan? And if they come back and say, "I can't structure a successful plan," well, you have an answer. But I think you put it in the positive. Finances, what are the conversion costs, the operating cost savings, cost avoidance, which is a factor, and then legal considerations, as I touched on earlier. So, in my mind, the next steps would be to develop a scope of study for the following. An architectural consultant that could lead you on the space need discussion, a financial consultant, which in essence would be probably an accounting firm that has the ability to dive into the various accounts, and they can unwind data and rewind data as necessary, and there's some great accounting firms that are very, very familiar with municipal operations, and an educational consultant. And, you know, who that consultant would be, or what firm that would be, obviously the guidance would come from the school superintendent, as to who does these kind of things and provides advice to school committees when they are looking at, you know, redistricting and things of this nature. We know there are consultants that do have that skill set. Financing is in place to pursue these studies. We had a bond authorization in 2012 that permits us to finance any one of these studies or all of these studies. So, finances are not an obstacle at this point in time. I would recommend that we establish three subcommittees, and the subcommittees would be an architectural subcommittee to develop the RFP. The subcommittee would be a capital plan member, a school committee member, and a staff member. And each one of the committees, for each one of the topics, would have that structure. And the task of that subcommittee, and the reason why I'm putting a staff member there is because the staff is really the people that are gonna, I would think, do the drafting of the RFP for review by the volunteers or the elected folks. The charge to those three subcommittees would be to develop an RFP and then bring it back to a meeting of this nature in about six weeks, so that everybody can look at the RFPs and say, "Yeah, we think we got it right, we think we got the points in there," and so forth, so we can get RFPs on the streets as soon as possible. So, if this strategy succeeds, we can free up financial resources for operating and capital needs, and we can provide for improved services to all of our residents. If it doesn't succeed, we're gonna have to still continue ways and look for other ways to cross that 3%, 5% divide. Just has to happen. But all parties have a responsibility in participating in a solution, or we're gonna be bound to accept the 3% solution, which I, in my estimation, you are not, the major departments cannot live effectively in that 3% world. That's just a reality of their operating posture. So, at this point, I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
My notes on slide five, it talked about the consolidation plan, town offices, council on aging, and the library, and SOAR and Light Department. What about the police department? Nothing was mentioned as far as...
We haven't got, we haven't got that far into it, that may be an option. Memorial School is about 66,000 square feet, so there is, potentially is adequate size there for that, but that, again, would be something that we could take a look at. The police department is gonna need to be addressed as well at some point. We have been exploring some alternative options for that facility as well.
On that same page, so what would be your plan, like once, say we did do this consolidation, what would be your plan as far as, would you sell the Town Hall property? Would you sell the...
Don't know the answer to that. I think that's something that we would all work through as a group. I've heard people talk about a variety of solution sets for Town Hall. Some folks have said, you know, "It's right across the street from an elderly housing, from the Housing Authority. Maybe it would make a great place for elderly housing, and maybe there's a way through either federal or state largess to make that happen." We don't have a good answer for what you would do with that building if it were not occupied as a Town Hall.
What about the other two or three buildings?
Again, we don't have a, we don't have a solid answer for that. That would be part of this study.
So, you want the school department to give up their building, but nobody else is gonna have any skin in the game? I mean, I think that if they're going to, you know, I think there needs to be, like kind of, like everybody's gonna have some...
Well, they would. I mean, the point is...
If the library's gonna get into that middle school, then I would think you'd want to sell that property and use those...
They very well might. Well, for instance, when the library, when the library was talking about redeveloping a new building by the Memorial School at that corner lot, part of their pro forma to afford that project was to sell the library building. Now, I think as a group of people, we need to sit and have a conversation about that because the library building might make a great historical location, historical museum and site for the town. Because right now, we have all that stuff in the second floor of the old Town Hall Fire Station and the Village. That's a conversation that we, as a group of people, have to have because this community has a lot of history, and for us not to preserve it in a proper fashion, you know, we have to, we should have a conscious discussion about that. And if we decide we're not gonna preserve it well, then don't preserve it well. But that particular building may make a great location for those kind of things, as an example.
Okay, well, I think on page four, though...
Yep.
You're kind of contradicting yourself because...
Why's that?
You're saying involves consolidating our total footprint to save operating costs. So, if you're consolidating your footprint, but now you're saying you're not gonna necessarily get rid of the...
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm s... Well, first of all, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying, and I think I've been pretty straightforward and clear about it, is...
I think you're doing a top ten a little bit.
Well, I appreciate the political drama that you're trying to get for the newspaper, and that's wonderful.
That's not what I'm trying to do.
But what I think is...
Basically making a statement.
Okay, you're welcome to make a statement. And I think that the fact, what we're trying to do here is look at, you know, our physical posture and our infrastructure on an intellectual level to make a determination of what we can afford. If folks don't want to do this, that's fine, but then you have to figure out, and the school department's gonna have to be part of that discussion, how do you live in that 3% world? If you guys can figure out how to cross the 3% world to the 5% world for the school department for the next three, four, or five years, come up with a plan. But I haven't heard it. Never heard it. So, this is an option to look at, you know, how we're provisioning ourselves, because we have something in the order of about $60 million of capital backlog that has to be addressed. We have serious operational needs that have to be addressed on a go-forward basis, and we can't afford it as we're currently configured, so...
I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, but I'm just saying that, in my opinion, I don't know about anybody else, I just feel like, if we're, you know, we're all gonna work together, then we all gotta kind of give up a little bit, I mean, if we're gonna give up the school, I think that...
Well, see, that, see, here's the thing, this is the difference in perspective that you have and I have. I don't look at these things as yours and those things as mine, I look at them as ours. And the question is, we have a physical plant in the town that includes schools, council on aging, Town Hall, and so forth. And we, together, as a group of adults, have to figure out what we're gonna do with those buildings. We can either renovate them all as they currently exist and spend the money that it's gonna cost to do that, or we can try to find a more cost-effective model, and by saving on the bonding costs, we can then have monies freed up and available for other purposes. That's the question that's confronting the community. But I do know that the community will have a Town Hall for the next, somewhere, will have a Town Hall function for the next, you know, 50, 100 years, we'll have a council on aging function, they're our fastest-growing population, we're gonna have a library for many years to come. So, we just need to figure out how we're going to address that. I'll go Kathy first, and then, I'm sorry, Stephanie.
Well, looking at the subcommittees, with the financial one being one of the three subcommittees, and knowing the history that this town has with what it does with surplus properties, I think that would be a very important piece. So, for example, exactly what would be done with Town Hall? And in addition to the police department, you also have an end-fire station there. Is that still a necessary location to meet the needs of this community? What would be done with the senior center? What exactly would be done with the library? Not to make quick decisions that occurred in the early 80s, when the decision was made to sell off the Damon School, when that would have been, I mean, that was, an example would have been to place Town Hall there, because the building was in deplorable conditions even in the early 80s. Senior housing was another idea that was brought forth at that time, so...
And what, you...
I'm concerned with the timeframe. You want to present within six weeks to the community. I'm concerned if...
Well, what do you think is being presented in six weeks?
Well, just the, do you have the accurate, have the information to put out RFPs to consolidate from three schools to two, to relocate departments in the Memorial Middle School, and then what to do with those surplus properties? And if those surplus properties are sold off, that's where the financial piece comes in. Would those money, well, would those monies be used or available to renovate or meet the educational needs for the Jacob School? I mean, what if, as far as science labs for students, because they don't exist at the Jacob School right now. So, I'm concerned with the timeframe, I think it's really short, and before a final decision is made, all of this has to be explored. So, whatever the ultimate decision is, it's a good decision.
You're right, and that's the purpose of the RFPs would be to get the appropriate professional help to help us model a variety of outcomes. And any financial consultant you get will provide a variety of models for the committee. Any educational consultant you hire, I would imagine, would provide a variety of models. The architectural piece will show you, for instance, that if you combine K through six at the Jacob School, you'll be, you know, you'll have far fewer children in the Jacob School than what the capacity of the school is. And seven through 12, you're bumping up right kind of at the capacity of the high school, but then you have to take into consideration, are all the children in the school system from Hall, for instance, and does that change your operational posture and things of this nature? So, you're right, and that's the point of studying it. I'm not arguing in favor of it, I'm saying you need to study it, you need to identify what you wanna study, because saying that we can't study it or don't study it doesn't really move the ball.
That's not what I'm saying. Four years ago, when we did a long-term space need, and each principal was charged with putting together a plan, what were the space needs? What were the physical needs? And in addition to listing those, there were costs associated with that. So...
Yes, and that's part of what you would study. That's exactly right. You have to study, what are the pluses, what are the minuses? Exactly right.
Phil, can I, Phil?
I'll go here, and then I'm, I'm gonna go here, Stephanie...
I just wanna clarify the six weeks. I wanna clarify the six weeks. There is no way that we're gonna have decisions in six weeks. I think the intent is in six weeks, we come back together, and by then, we hopefully have an RFP that's, you know, fairly strong enough that we could put it out in the street.
That's right. The RFP is intended...
So a decision is at least, the decision's at least a year plus away, at least a year away.
I would say that's correct, because you also have, you know, depending on how you do it and what you do, you have, you know, town meeting action, you have school committee action, you've got, you know, phasing, you know, all sorts of different issues. But you've got, my estimation is if you're interested in this concept, you have to start the plan, you have to start planning at some point. So I'm gonna go to Stephanie, and then back here, to this lady here, and then to Dennis back over there.
I have a couple of things. I guess I'd just like to make a request on page seven. We have the board issues deciding, and it's called for operational needs. I was wondering if you consider adding operational slash educational needs. I'd like educational needs to be sort of highlighted as far as on that page, since...
Yeah, I can certainly add, and when I get into details, you have the school department in fact, but I can certainly add operational slash educational needs. That is the intent of that bullet point.
I agree, but didn't say it, that's why I would like it added if possible. It seems as if the school committee agrees that our charge is educational, the educational outcome, and to make sure that it's better. I guess I would ask this committee, we have all the administrators here, in the several years that I've been on the committee, they've presented to us at least twice publicly as to why they thought education would be impacted, which is why we have, as a group, sort of have come out and said that it's not a good idea to turn these buildings over. The perception from your committee seems to be, as well as people in the public, that there is space because there's this declining enrollment, we can fit 700 and something kids into a building, but that doesn't take into account all the sort of the different things. We have the administrators here, I guess I'd like to open it up to the committee that if your perception is that we have all the space and, you know, we've got rooms here and we've got rooms there, they're here to answer questions, so...
You know, I'm not, I'm not here to get into that level of detail this evening. What I'm here this evening to do is talk about the concept, and I'd rather have a space analysis done in a fashion by an architectural firm or people that do space analysis, just as it was done originally when we planned the schools. In addition, you know, I, part of the question that I think needs to be asked of all of us is, okay, you can stay in the current state and operate current, as you currently do, but if you can't get any more than 3% budget growth for the next four or five years, what does that do to the educational model? And that's a problem that needs to be surmounted. It's the same, as I said, by the way, for the three other major departments that we're gonna have to address as a community. And so the other ways to address those are, you go to, you go back to the community and you ask for additional taxing authority through an override cycle or a debt exclusion. We've done, we've tried to do that, as you know, twice, I believe, in the last five or six years, has not been successful. So, you know, that's the dilemma that I want people to kinda keep their eye on. If we continue to operate as a group, all of us, it doesn't matter the department, if we continue to operate in the current fashion of operating without making any change, then we have to be willing to accept that we're gonna be operating in that 3% world. And I think that is violative of your charge. I think you're gonna have difficulty as a school committee person saying, I can live in a 3% world. And I don't, that's not pejorative, that's just the reality, because it's very hard to do.
So I guess my follow-up question to that is then, if the school committee decides that there is detrimental effects to children's education and that this isn't a good idea, will we be only allocated 3% of the budget going forward once the capital plan and committee sort of goes down their road? If we're not part of the solution, and aren't, and don't turn over...
I don't think we're gonna have, I don't think, it's a question of, the reality is, if you look at our revenues on a go-forward basis, nobody's gonna get more than that. Because it just isn't there. So that's the problem. And quite frankly, I think that you're, quite frankly, I think the school department is gonna be closer to a 5% or a 6% model, just because you're making big investments in technology, and you're making other investments. And that's fine, I understand that's what you wanna do, that's what you think is in the best interest of the children, and I'm not gonna argue against that. The question is, my challenge is, is how do you get to that solution set? I cannot currently see, and if anybody else in the room looks at the budget and they can see a 5% solution, raise their hand. Show it to me on paper, go to the advisory board meetings and identify where that extra $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 is in our budget. Because that's what you're talking about, and then it compounds. And so that's the dilemma. And again, if we don't try to work on it together, one way to do it is something like this or a combination of things, because I know, I don't believe the general public at this juncture is in the mood to give us additional taxing authority. Don't think they're ready to vote a proposition two and a half override. Not when the roads are in crappy condition, not when seawalls are falling down, they're just not there.
General, can I answer to Stephanie's question?
I'm sorry to jump in, but I, for one, I'm speaking for myself on the committee. I was involved with building the schools, I was on the school building committee for more than a decade, and still going on, so I'm still on the school building committee. I'm keeping an open mind, 'cause I went through the school system when two and a half hit. It hit right in the middle of my high school years. I went to Damon School, I saw the Damon School get shut down, I saw it deteriorate and fall to pieces, and sat there for many years before the town sought to try to pull us out of the two and a half doldrums that happened in the early 80s. Where the money went, I don't know. I wasn't here at the time, I was in college, but it probably went to operational needs, some structure needs, or back to the school, I don't know. That's not our question here tonight. I agree with you, I think some better choices could have been made back then, but they weren't. But again, for myself, I, I don't wanna tread water on a committee. We've been kinda just going and going, and nothing's really been happening, 'cause we have to deal with this issue. If you can tell me tonight that you feel you've already had the principals and the administrators, and to tell you that you need all the space you currently have for educational purposes, or the education, the quality education would decline, tell me that, we won't waste our money on the study, RFPs, or waste our time, the committee will go back, we'll find another solution. But I am going through, into this with an open mind, because I don't wanna see five years the population jump up, like what happened to Hingham, they closed all their schools, their population grows, and they're building new schools again. So, you know, I was the one that turned the keys over to the school committee, and you, they're in your care, you have the final say. If, if the study comes back, regardless what it says, you still have the keys. By law, you're, the schools are in your custodianship. That's a word, is that a word? Custodial? Custodial care. So, that's all I'm saying. And really, you know, if you guys have your mind made up, if you think we have our mind made up, no hard feelings. Let's, let's move forward and find some, some other avenue, that's all.
Before I go to Doc, I'm gonna go to this, I'm waiting patiently, so I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna go to Dennis Blackall, then I'm gonna go to Doc Silva.
So, you know, obviously, you have to explore every avenue, I get that with this committee. And my question, I have a question in a moment, and the question may be more a town manager question than really this committee, but we, we've discussed this since the first override attempt, that the revenue coming into the town is, is a big issue. And I asked the question then, five years ago, whatever it was, you know, is there a long-term plan for the town of how to create more revenue within the town? I mean, you just, again, tonight, I feel like it's the same information we got five years ago, that there's no new revenue, there's no new opportunities, there's, nothing has changed in terms of trying to find more ways to build up the revenue within the town. Is there something that you just haven't mentioned?
No, the issue that we're confronted when you look at our revenue streams, we have three, every town's got three major revenue streams. There's property tax, which is constrained by proposition two and a half. There are local receipts, which are primarily driven by two large receipts, a motor vehicle excise, and that's driven exclusively by how often people buy cars and what the value of their cars are, and building permits and building activity. Because Hall does not have a lot of developable land, you're not gonna have in the building permit area and new growth area that you would see in other communities, because you just don't have large tracts that are being redeveloped. If you look at Hingham, Cohasset, for instance, Cohasset, you know, huge, Avalon was redeveloped there a few years ago, they've got lots of homes that are being built in the area, Hingham is the same thing. The commercial base in the town is about 4% of the total tax base. There have been lots of efforts and continue to be efforts to redevelop the front beach, very difficult environment to do redevelopment in the last three or four years because of the general economy. So we're working very hard to do redevelopment on the front beach, but that is, takes multiple years to do. The HRA, which is a separately-elected body and not under control of the town, it's an independent body, as you know, has had three developer proposals on their site and three developers that declared bankruptcy. That's not the HRA, that's not the cause of the HRA, but that's a reality of that site. They're gonna put that back out to bid, and that will have some impact on our property taxes, but when you put the total package together, it's gonna have to be a combination of something that we do internally, and ultimately, you're gonna have to go back to the general public and ask for additional assistance. Clearly, on the larger projects, you're gonna have to, on some of the larger projects, if you don't do something like this.
Right, well, all I'm saying is that, so, if you will, this is a creative way...
It's a strategy.
Creative strategy. Whereas the strategy for the future of the town is very linear.
No.
Well, it is, though, because it's not looking at what opportu, what opportunities to create business in this town might there be? Like, that's what I'm talking about. Creating more, what, what kind of environment would be an environment that might draw people to this absolutely gorgeous community? Because the one thing that I do wanna say, we keep going back to the declining enrollment of the schools, that's been brought up numerous times tonight, but you have to understand, and I think this has to be part of this conversation, it is a self-fulfilling prophecy. If we keep saying, you know what, we can, we're a, we're a 1,000-kid, one-room schoolhouse, come on to Hall, people are gonna run for the hills. Young families do not move into communities that they feel don't support the schools. It's just a fact, and it's not just Hall, I mean, it's, it's a fact of education in our country today. People are very afraid, people are pulling their kids out and going to private schools if they can, and leaving the public schools for those who can't. I mean, that is really the mentality that we live in. And so when you live in a community that can, I mean, for my kids to come up to the high school, and everybody, every person, no matter where they're from, when I say, oh, my kids are in high school, you know, I live in Hall, and they say, well, where do they go to high school? I mean, it's, it's a standard question, it's not just 'cause I'm from Hall, it happens everywhere. I just feel like, and I will say for the record, my kids have had an excellent education, you know, despite budget cuts, despite all of that, but if we keep projecting that education is not a priority in this town, then the education, the numbers are going to continue to decline. It's just a reality.
Well, to that point, I'm not sure why people have that sentiment, because if you look at our operational budgets, the schools are now almost at 60% of the operational budget. The per pupil cost for students in Hall is now exceeds...
No, 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 you're missing my point. I'm not saying...
Well, I'm saying, these are points that you should use to respond to people that give you, I mean, part of what has to happen, the school did a great job, for instance, with the blue ribbon aspect, maybe part of what has to happen is, you know, the conversation about what is happening with education. But the fact is, we are at about 1,060 students. Why that decline is occurring, you know, is, there's lots of reasons. And I don't think it's necessarily because people are saying, I don't wanna go to school in Hall. I think part of it is, is we have a ton of empty nesters that have moved in from surrounding communities, and, you know, they've sold large homes, and we know this demographically, they've sold large homes in surrounding communities, and they buy on the water, and they, and they renovate, and they become very, very good members of the community. I mean, each community takes on, to some, to some extent, its own ethos and its own demographic life. This community, for many years, had a very interesting demographic, and the demographic was something like this, and matter of fact, I looked at the population of the community about 100 years ago, and I think it was 900 people, according to the U.S. Census Department, it was incredibly small, right? Paragon Park, and the park was the thing that dominated the community for, what, 70 years, 80 years? The population in the wintertime would be 5, 6,000 people, and then would pop up to maybe 25, 20, 25,000 people. In my estimation, what has happened in this community in the last 10 or 15 years, it's moved away from a seasonal community, and it is moving to a year-round residential community. We know that when you see what's happening with summer homes being turned into year-round homes and winterized and so forth. We see that happening, you know, in many, many of the residential properties. So the question then is, is well, what's our demographic now? Right now, the fastest-growing demographic in this community is actually 85-plus. So, you know, there's lots of questions that have to be addressed, but, you know, the issue that's confronting us is, is we have some real financial issues that need to be addressed. The economic development portion of the community, there are people working on that, but there is no single magic bullet, because there's still people torn about, do you create what was, make it a great place for visitors to come from outside? And that's being confronted by the fact that the four or five things that brought a lot of people here 30 years ago, only one of them's left, which is the beach.
I'm just saying that that, that committee on that side should be just as creative and open-minded as you're asking this committee on this side to be. That's all.
They have, they are, they have been creative. They got, they had Garrett Bradley, for instance, file legislation to get the DCR to allow a lease to go on a property that is basically the single largest dead zone in the commercial block on the front beach. They hired a full-time community development director, the first one we've had in probably 20 or 30 years. They've raised just about every single fee you could possibly raise to support the operations, and then funnel that money back into economic development activities. They're right now debating a summer rental bylaw that would allow people to rent bylaws and bring people, summer rentals to bring people into the community, and they're taking a lot of heat for it as an example. So all the committees are under pressure. And I think the problem is, is we keep looking at things as us, them. It's not school committee against selectmen, it's not capital planning committee against the, the school committee, it's not LEMDEOS against the school department, it's not. The fact of the matter is, there is a big problem, and we're not gonna get past it. We have a couple ways you can do it in Massachusetts. You can either go to the general public and say, override two and a half, or you can find it from within. And going to the general public for two and a half is a tall order, because the public looks at what we're doing, we're all kind of in the fishbowl, you know, we're all the junkies and the folks that are in, in the fight on a daily basis. The general public, I think, does not have the greatest amount of confidence in all of us. I think they're looking, and they're saying, why am I paying this tax bill and my roads stink? Why is the seawall falling down? Why is there grass growing between cracks? Why is it that my kid doesn't have a community center? Why is it, they're saying a lot of why is it's, because they know they're paying taxes and they don't think they're getting value, which means you're not gonna get a two and a half override until they think they're getting value. And they're not gonna give us a two and a half override until they think we're all working together to find solutions that are in their best interest. That's the bottom line in my estimation, and this is a plan. I don't have any problem with people saying, take it, crumple it up, throw it away, but then come up with something else. You can't throw it away without coming up with some other solution set. So if somebody wants to present a different concept paper, the PowerPoint projector is here, set a date, we'll be here in two weeks. I mean, I've inherited a lot of other ideas. So I'm, you know, I'm fine, I'm not wed to this idea.
... proposal in two weeks.
Well, what, give, set a timeframe, a month, I don't know, pick a, pick a date. I'm going to Doc, Dennis, and then Doc Silva, and then Stephanie.
Thank you, Phil. First of all, in terms of creating opportunities for revenue, it seems to me that this town has gone from like 2,500 living units to 4,500 living units, starting in like the early to middle 80s. And the majority of that has gone into building the schools and producing a good education. And on a personal note, I have three kids that have gone through the whole school system, and it represents well over 30 years of education. And I'm quite happy with the education that my kids got. So, I think that the school committee and the school department has done a fine job, and done a fine job on limited resources. With regard to a plan for the future, Phil mentioned the community development manager, who's Bob Foltz, and some of the things that's gone on with Bob Foltz include significant change to zoning laws as a, from Water Street to the base of Atlantic Hill. The expectation and the hope is, is that that'll generate development, and that that development will generate revenue. Also in that area, we've looked at the DCR property and tried to figure out how to make the DCR property a tax-producing component to the community. So, there is a lot of work that's going on on those fronts. I have two questions for you, Phil.
Sure.
Do we have an identification of the assets that are, you know, what their expected life is from this point? For example, we know we've got a seawall up in Stony Beach, the North Stony Beach, that we managed to get funds for, and that'll be rebuilt in the short term. But if we didn't have that money, that seawall would be a disaster waiting to happen, and we'd have to produce the funds. So if we look at all of the projects that we need to do on a capital basis, do we have a sense of what the existing, what the projected maximum life of those assets would be, such that we would have a sense of when we would have to start laying out capital, and when debt service expense would kick in? And after that, I have one more question.
We do. We were the first community in the state to do a seawall study in '94, that was followed up with a study that was done in all coastal communities in the state on our model in '06 by Bourne Engineering. Bourne Engineering, by the way, has got a contract to do further evaluation of the seawall that ties into the stretch we just got a $2.75 million grant for, to continue that, that project. So, we have a very clear sense of the ownership of all the protective structures in town, the seawalls and revetments and things. We know when they were built, we know when they were licensed, and we have a rating, because everybody believes their seawall is the worst. And that's what allowed us, by the way, to get the grant about a month ago for 2.75 million, which represented about a third of all the grant dollars available in the state. When it goes to roads, we just finished the preliminary roadway rating system, we got funding from Chapter 90, which is the State Highway Department, to go through all the roads in town and put them on a scale, because again, everybody thinks their road is the worst. And so what you have to do is, there are engineering firms that basically go through each road, and they make a determination, they grade it, and they say, you know, this is an A road, a B road, a D road, and they also look at the use of the road, and they'll give you a sense of what you need to do to extend the life of the roadway, if you can. So, you know, oftentimes, you'll see people out there doing crack sealing in roads and so forth, you know, those little squiggles you'll see in roadways, that's designed to extend the life of a road for a few years. There are some roads in town, you can't get much more life out of, which is why we have a $5 million application pending for Atlantic Ave, and it's the same program that we use to rebuild the Main Street program, as an example. And I want to amplify one point that Dennis had, to go to one of your points. Town meeting last year did pass a major Economic Redevelopment Act, which is the overlay district, for example. So I think, you know, when you look at, the town is trying as hard as it can to move forward on a variety of fronts. Every department is trying to make it better, whether it be the police department, the fire department, Public Works, and we've got some great people in place that are trying to make it a better place. But this, you know, you can't keep pulling rabbits out of the hat, you have to figure out a way to, how do you, if you've got good people in place, give them the resources and let them loose. And the problem we've had to date is, we've been able to give some resources, but I am very confident that if we could get Joe Stigliani, our Public Works Director, a little more resource, it would make a big impact. I am very confident that if Dr. Terrell had a sense of comfort of what her budget would really look like realistically for the next three years, she could come to the school committee with a plan and said, you know, I've got a sense now of what I'm going to have for three years, it's not going to be a question mark every year. That would give her and her staff the ability to say, this is what we think the educational vision for these children should be for the next three years. I am very confident that we have the right people in most of our functions, we don't have the resource, and we have to, as a group of people, figure out how we're going to cross that bridge. And I don't, there's no easy answer to it, because we're not the private sector. We are in like seven or eight different businesses, and really, very few of them are alike, you know, the police business really is completely different than the school business.
Do we have the word for it?
Yes, one more question.
Go ahead.
The last question is, you talked about the 3% world, the 5% world. In the 3% world, does that assume costs associated with must-do capital projects and the debt service related to them?
The 3% world is kind of the world we're budgeting. If you look at the FY15 budget, that's a great example of the 3% world. We kind of keep our nose above water operationally. No single department really is able to take on any new initiative. There's no real initiative in that 3% world in any department. And the capital is about $350,000, and it's enough to kind of replace a few cruisers, maybe buy, you know, do a little bit of technical stuff with the schools, do kind of the little short-term items, but it doesn't pave any stretch of road, it really doesn't get any stretch of seawall done, it doesn't do anything that cures any of our major infrastructure issues. So, the 3% world is just keeping your nose above water. And actually, what's going to happen within a couple of years with the 3% world is some departments are actually going to slide backwards, because you can kind of do it for a while in the major departments, and again, I'm not talking about the major departments, but they represent, you know, the thrust of the activities that most citizens feel on a day-to-day basis. Those departments have a big, big challenge. And, you know, the problem is, is you can't say, in order to meet that challenge, I'm going to get rid of the tax-collecting office or the assessing office, because statutorily, you must have those offices, and you must perform that function. So, Doc Silva.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
I would hope that when we leave this room, we leave with a sense of the fact that this committee and the school committee should, in good faith, sit down and study. Now, we're talking about an architectural consultant, a financial consultant. If both of those reports from these subcommittees came back positive, and the report from the educational consultant came back negative, saying that it would seriously affect the school system, I'd be the first one to vote against it. I didn't spend 20-plus years on the Hull School Committee, and a year as president of the State School Committee Association to downgrade education. I think that, I think that the most important thing in selling a town is the educational system in that town. And, and, and so, you know, I sit here now, and I'm one of the people who has spoken very positively about looking at the Hull and more of the school, about seeing what we could do. I've talked about declining population in the school system, when my kids went through, we had over 2,000 kids in the system. And I've done all that, but again, I reiterate, if it came down to the nitty-gritty and the educational consultant people said it was adversely affected, I would say, forget the whole idea, just forget it. And we tend to get very emotional about things like this, and it's a time that we really shouldn't get emotional. We should be, we should be sitting down and saying, okay, school committee, okay, capital planning committee, get your reports from your subcommittees, and, and I don't see the sub, I don't see there being a six-week deadline, as someone said before. All it says here, the subcommittees report back to a capital planning or school committee. We receive a report, both committees. We then sit down and we analyze that report, and that's when we're looking at these things. If anyone thinks that I'm not a strong supporter of education, my name is on a court case in Plymouth County in the late 60s, where the town meeting cut the school budget, and 10 people signed a petition, and it's Dr. Johnny Silva et al. versus the town of Hull. And we had the funds restored, but I think that we've got to sit down and critically analyze everything that was said tonight, and forget that you're losing my building, I have power here and I'm losing power there, forget that. Phil put it, Phil put it quite right when he said, it's not your school, it's not my school, it's our school. It's not your town hall, it's not mine, it's ours. Let's look at it. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Father Parker, and then back.
Thank you. I'm also a library trustee, and I'm speaking individually. I'm a little, I'm totally in agreement with your plan and everything that John just said. I'd like to focus a bit on the library, though. I'm a little, well, I'm, I'm ill at ease that it's just getting dropped in without thinking about it separately. There are three points about the library I'd like to make. Number one, we've just had a wonderful centennial with John Boyle O'Reilly. That building is now over 100 years old, it is owned by the selectmen. There are potentials for revenue if it can get on the national listing of buildings. Quincy has profited by getting money, using it, and since we have the land next to it owned, it might be possible, with all the sustainability and all today, to use that as a library in the future. So I don't like it immediately lumped in that third category. Secondly, I think it is far closer, it is continuing ed for everybody in the town. I think that the real worries of the library and the real needs are much closer to those of the schools than aging police and the others. So I would like to see that that be focused on also. Thank you.
Back here, and then-
I was just going to say, I mean, based on what we said tonight, and I watched the school committee's very effective presentation earlier this year, I think the fact's already out there, that if we were to close the middle school and consolidate, it would be detrimental to our children's education. I think we could all save a lot of time and money and resources to stop these committees that are going to meet and plan and hash out what's going to should be the ultimate conclusion, which is that this is not a workable plan, it's not good for the town. It's, as Michelle said, it's not only self-fulfilling, it's defeatist-type, it's a defeatist-type solution to suggest that we put all this time and resources into building schools for our kids, and for their education, and their needs are getting greater and greater with state mandates, and to close them sends a message not only to our kids, I think, that Hull doesn't take their education seriously, I think it sends a message to the public at large, that Hull, unlike probably any other South Shore town, isn't taking the kids' education seriously, and I don't mean the school department or the administrators, because I think they do a wonderful job. I think it's town management, I think there's a hostility toward education of our students, and I think that closing the middle school is sort of, that just sort of characterized that hostility, and I think that we need now to start thinking of different solutions to our budget problems, and we can just put this to bed now.
Well, I was kind of going back to 11, exactly what Doc Silva said, is the most, not the most important, but I don't know if we would be wasting our time doing the different subcommittees. We should just do, just to get a little bit more research-based, just to open it up for open-mindedness, just the education one, because that would be ultimately, like you just said, the most important, if it's going to affect the education, then why do all the other subcommittees? Because, bottom line, right? So, I mean, I do think that we should do some research, and then come back, but I don't know if we're doing the architectural and the financial, it's ultimately about the education. So I was just going to kind of go back there, I didn't know if you wanted to do all the other subcommittees.
Any other questions or comments? Stephanie and then Eric.
Well, I guess I just want to make the point, once again, that we have a wonderful leadership team, they're here, you're here, we tried to do it previously. I think if you just gave them a small opportunity, you know, even just if you talked about the high school, the comment was put out there that there's 485 students in the, that this was built for 485, there's 300 and something there now. I think if, you know, the principal got up and spoke for five minutes, I think he could eloquently explain to you everything that he's told us, as far as how education would be impacted, which is why we appear to be digging our heels in, but it's because the people that are in charge of educating our children have told us publicly a few times that education would be impacted. But it appears, and I guess I would defer to the committee, is the only way that you'll sort of believe that it will be impacted is if an outside party does it, as opposed to the people that are actually-
No, I don't think that the study should, if you are convinced the school committee members are satisfied that you feel that there is no point in doing the educational study, vote to not do the study, and we'll all move on, as John said at the beginning of it.
But then we get painted as the bad guys.
No, you know what, I will publicly say-
... discussion with you here, so that you-
I'll publicly say right now, for the press and for the audience, that doesn't paint you as bad guys, that paints you as folks that you think you've done enough research on the issue to come to a conclusion on it. That's your prerogative, that you're elected for that policy issue, that's your prerogative, and any member of the public that tries to paint you with it, I'll stand next to you with them and say, that's an unfair statement. This is a concept, this is an idea, as I said. If we don't do this, it's okay, but we still have the problem, and the question is, is how are you going to address the problem? So, you know, everybody has a role in finding a solution, that's the point of it. So it's up to you, you know, you ultimately have to make a decision. There is no point in doing a study for the sake of a study if you, as elected officials, feel in your heart and in your conscience that you are elected for, don't think it makes any sense to do it.
But I, I don't want, I don't want to be like that, because I am a community member. How do I get this body to feel the same way we do, because we've been presented with information? Because it doesn't appear that us just feeling that way is going to convince you.
I don't know, but does it not? You don't ask them if they feel that way. I think they recognize that the decision on the utilization of the schools rests solely and completely with the school committee. That's it, that's law. So I think the committee is fully understanding that.
But we've tried to get that message out there, and it hasn't seemed to made its way back to this committee, so I guess-
That's not correct.
No.
That's, that, does any committee member feel-
Do you believe us that we believe in education's going to be impacted since we've presented it twice?
I believe, I believe that you believe what you're being told, but I believe, as a community, we need a second opinion, an independent second opinion. Because we all know what we tell each other is true.
But you haven't been presented the information as a committee, we have. So don't you think you bring a different perspective and a different set of questions?
I'd be happy to-
... hiring an outside consultant?
I'd be happy to see that, but I still reserve the right that I think we need an independent opinion.
And then Eric, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dave.
Hi, Dave Quinton, I'm a chair of the advisory board, and a member for a long time. I have a couple comments, real quick. One that relates to Stephanie's question, and one to a comment that was just made a little bit earlier. And I think that previous comment stems, and, and, not stems, but highlights, a plot that is out there, and that I certainly heard in my ears on the board, and has been mentioned as well separately, you know, this us-versus-them thing, and the town doesn't support the school department, and this hostility, that, that, that word really bothered me, because I don't feel like that's the case. I think when we look, as an advisory board, and we look at this budget every year, and when we look at the debt service, and the percentage of that debt service that exists in these three buildings that are the school department, I think that tells an opposite story. I mean, really, we're talking millions, tens of millions of dollars, that the towns voted in a couple of different votes, actually a series of them, and finally led to the debt exclusion that we all agreed to, get exactly how long ago, we'd say over five years ago. But I would, I would caution us all to look at, not look at that, that there's this hostility, because I think the town is very supportive of the school system. I can't begin to tell you the challenge that the school department had ten years, and what I saw with declining test scores and the like, and teacher sentiment, and people wanting to leave this department, and then under leadership, like Dr. Terrell and the team that she has brought together here, we're seeing awesome, great strife with the school department. And honestly, I don't think it's the buildings, I think the buildings are building. I think it's the people and the team that here, and the parents, and the students, working together, and really kind of bringing things together that's made that leap in the past few years. So, I hope, I hope at some point, folks in the town won't see this hostility, because I don't see it. Now, caveat, my kids don't go to school here, but it has nothing to do with the quality of education that happens here at Hull, whether it's the Jacobs, the middle school, or the high school, there's other reasons, but I certainly don't feel any hostility towards what's going on. I look with joy that test scores are going up, and the feeling of the teachers being here and working here are going up. So, that's all I have to say about that. I would agree with my colleague, John, about having the independent review. I understand fully where the final decision- I understand fully where the final decision lies, but I don't see the harm in doing that. And I would hope that all of us would be open to that concept.
Before we jump to Doc, I just wanna jump into that point, because it seems to be we're at a, we're at this juncture here.
That was gonna be my comment though, Phil. Well, Stephanie said something, and after all the committee, she has a deep faith in the administration of the public schools, and I would say, well placed, because look what's happened. Look at the Blue River schools, look what's happened with our scores. I think that, but, but I really don't think this is the time for us to be asking the administration the questions you want, because I think the purpose of the educational consultants will to be to get an objective view. And we can't, and sometimes, many times, and I know it's happened to me many times, you get so involved in something that you become very subjective on that issue. And sometimes someone will come in and objectively look and say, "Well, this and this and this is right, but this may need some improvement." And so I think the idea of an objective educational consultation is great. You know, I just think, I think it's great. And I'm not saying, and if you have any education whatsoever, any common sense whatsoever, you can't help but look at what the schools have done under Dr. Terrell and say, "Hey, hell of a job."
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the prerogative of the podium for a second and kind of, I think that there's...
You almost do, go ahead.
I do, but here's, here's, because it's, when it's getting, you know, we're moving on, but I think...
There's a very important thing that is, one of the things that has come to light this evening is this, is this question. And Stephanie, in her role as school committee member, is urging us to listen to the staff. And I think all of us would be remiss not to. What I would suggest we do is we schedule another evening, don't start it at 8:30 at night. There were two pieces, two kind of pieces of big information that have been produced on this topic. There was the study that was done a couple of years ago, which I don't know how many people here have seen it, but I think it should be distributed to everybody. And then there's the testimony from the existing staff. And I would recommend that before we go to the next step, because you cannot, we can't do this process unless we're all interested in doing it. And if anybody feels like they've been left behind or haven't had their voice heard, then it's not gonna work. So my recommendation would be is we schedule another night, whatever's convenient, you know, a couple of weeks out, a week out, whatever it could be, we'll pick a night, Doc, the good doctor and I will, I don't know if I can do it three times in a row.
Yeah, I'll do it.
I just, I didn't know, I didn't know we could do it three nights. But we'll pick a night, we can convene, this is a good room to meet, we can convene here. In advance of that meeting, I would ask that we get a copy of the study that was done, you know, a couple of years ago, and then the administrators, current administrators, who might not have been part of that study, can also offer their insights as to what their observations are. And the committee event, at least, will have the benefit of understanding the perspective that we're hearing. And after that, if after you look at that and after you give a presentation, you say, "Well, okay, now I understand the perspective internally, I still think there needs to be an external review," then we have that discussion. It could also be after people hear that, everybody says, "You know what? That was a pretty darn good piece of work. We don't need to have the discussion." So I just think we owe it to all of us, if we're gonna try to remember what we do, whether we adopt this concept or find to work on something else, we're all, because it's the inside, I always call it the inside 200. It's the same people in all of our committees. So we're gonna have to be working with each other on these topics going forward. So I would recommend we do that, because I don't want the school committee and the administrators to leave here tonight and say, "Hey, they had their mind made up. They didn't give us a chance to say anything." I don't think the kind of things, you know, having testimonial tonight in kind of a, you know, short fashion is necessarily the best way to get that information out in a constructive fashion. So that would be my recommendation.
Just one other piece to that equation...
Sure.
...would be the cost. The cost for the outside consulting. Because that should be weighed, since what we're talking about is budget...
Yep.
...that should be weighed into the equation.
I agree, I would agree. Okay. Ann Murray, Eric, and then Eric is gonna be last. Unless I don't like it, then I'll take a look. And, and then Eric, and then we're gonna go with tonight, and we're gonna, before we leave...
Eric, he's not a kid.
We all, before we leave, I would like us to at least, the school committee and the capital planning committee, to pick a night for that meeting that we just talked about, okay? So that would just be the one piece of kind of housekeeping, because we're all here and trying to organize, and with so many people, it becomes difficult. So Ann, you go, and then Eric, and then we're gonna go from there.
The comment that was just made as far as the cost, and on slide 10, it refers to financing as in place through town building bond authorization passed in 2012. And I was hoping you could just give us a little clarification on that.
Yep. Back in 2012, there was a bond authorization passed at town meeting. Find the language here.
For a roof.
No, it was for roof as well as town buildings, if you read the language on the motion. Move that the town vote to appropriate $1,200,000 to pay for the cost of necessary repairs, renovations, and/or rehabilitation of town-owned public facilities or buildings, including but not limited to roof repairs, plumbing, electrical improvements, and/or any other necessary repairs and renovations to the Department of Public Works, Library, Council on Aging, or any other town facilities or buildings, only after a proper needs assessment and engineering studies have been performed, and it has been determined to be a prudent course of action. And materials to meet said appropriation, the treasurer collective, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum. And that was voted unanimously at the May 8th, 2012 town meeting. And we verified with town council that these are, excuse me, bond council, that these expenditures of this nature are consistent with the law.
The comment I wanted to make is, I, this whole question, when it first came up a number of years ago, I was very open-minded about it, and I really felt that by now we would have had more of the answers to know one way or the other what makes sense for the community. I lived through, you know, I saw the Damon School closed and sat there empty for many years. I lived through double sessions. I know what it's like to have classes backstage. It wasn't great, but, you know, somehow we managed to do it, and you lived with it. And I don't think it really hurt the people of my generation. Is it something I'd wish for today's kids? No. But I think we're looking at a town hall that's falling down upon its ears, and we're gonna have to have a solution there sooner versus later. And I think you can move some of the administrative part of the town hall into other buildings fairly easily. I think what you're gonna find is the issue of the police and the fire departments is a much bigger issue. But I, you know, with all due respect to the administration, I appreciate what they've done, but, you know, the old cliche, think outside the box, sometimes somebody who's not in the box may have a different perspective and just open and give a suggestion that none of us have thought of. And I think this is one case where you might need to spend the money to see if it's the right answer. I also would have liked to have had an answer about, from the school, MS, School Building Association, of what does it mean as far as the financing for the Memorial Middle School? The funds were intended for it to be used as a school. You know, times change, economies change, I don't know how they view that. I don't know whether we'd have to pay that money back, maybe that answers the question, or pay it back on a prorated basis. But I think the question should have been asked before now. And if it hasn't been, I think we need that answer to make an informed decision as a community, not as a school population. So I am for doing this proposal, even if it does mean expending money that could be used maybe elsewhere, because I think in the long run, we'll all have a better comfort level that we're getting a better answer.
Okay, no, not...
Eric. I was just gonna, I was just gonna answer that question.
Go ahead.
The superintendent at our last school committee meeting, we asked her to notify the MSBA, to contact the MSBA about that exact question, so they haven't got back to us, but we've already started that process to get that answer. So that's probably one of the first answers we need to get.
Eric, and then I, actually, the last word is gonna go to John Riley for conclusion. Eric comments for the opening, so Eric and then John, go ahead.
Okay, first, I actually had three questions. One was exactly the question that Ann asked, so my second question, though, is kind of stepping back fundamentally about this whole process. I think the most compelling case that you're making is that we have this tremendous capital expense that's on the horizon, $90 million. Town hall, $24 million alone. So if this, if the primary issue here is cost avoidance, I think that one of the fundamental questions is what will happen to the buildings, if we consolidate the footprint, what happens to the old buildings? What would happen to town hall? What would happen to the library? What would happen to the senior center? Anything? Because if this is all about cost avoidance, then whatever we're going to have to do to those buildings with whatever the future is, has to be factored into the equation.
I agree.
Unless you're just gonna let them just...
I would agree, and I'll give you, I'll give you an example. I know, an example...
He's not through, Phil.
What's that?
He's not through.
That's okay, I'm used to this.
Go ahead, go to the first.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that we already have some guidance, at least in one of those buildings. For instance, when the library was talking about relocating to a new building, again, part of their performance, the library trustees, their recommendation was to sell that building. But that discussion has to be had, what's gonna happen with each of those buildings. And ultimately, the town may decide to say, "Okay, the Council on Age building that is at San Maset Ave, you know, if you have a better location for that function, then you probably don't need that building. Why would you preserve a building you don't need?" So you have to have those discussions as part of this piece of it. And it's not primarily cost avoidance, it's cost avoidance, but it also drives the question, can you do things in a more operationally efficient manner? Now, you know, on the...
Getting value for the money that you currently spend.
Yeah. So, you know, that's kind of the general concept. I mean, for instance, right now, we have multiple billing operations spread around town. We've got a soar billing operation, we've got a light department billing operation, we've got a town hall billing operation, we've got probably three finance, four finance departments around town that, you know, in today's day and age, you don't need four finance departments around town. You could get away with one finance department servicing all the departments. You could get away with one billing operation servicing all the departments. If you're a new resident to this town, you wanna sign up for utilities, you stop at the light department, you stop at the soar department, you stop at town hall. Why don't you stop one place? These are the kinds of things. Every, all those little bits and pieces on the operational side that you can pick up in any of the things that, a lot of you pick up, you know, 15, 20,000 here, 30,000 there, that all helps in the cost. Everything that you can do to kind of stay focused on your core functions and get the resources to those core functions are what, in my estimation, are what's gonna make the community be a very attractive place. People want good roads to drive on, they want great schools, they want, you know, good police and fire departments, and they wanna make sure, they want their public services to be, you know, quality public services. You don't hear a lot of people, by the way, lobbying for great treasurer collectors or lobbying for great assessing. They lobby for schools, public works, fire, police. That's what they want.
My third point is kind of getting at that. I don't really understand how, on a fundamental level, consolidating into the building, I mean, you talked about we have four different, you know, financial departments, that you don't need a building to consolidate personnel. And what I don't understand is how this really would fundamentally change the 3% issue.
Well, first of all, you've got the cost avoidance issue of servicing debt. The question is, is how much debt are you gonna service and how are you gonna pay for that debt, right?
Well, you're talking about new debt.
Yeah.
But that's not gonna change the fundamental 3% track we're on.
No, it's gonna make it worse. It's gonna make, it's gonna make it worse, because you're gonna have to address these buildings. You're gonna have to house employees somewhere.
But the way you would normally deal with major capital expenses is not in your operational budget. We've seen what doing that for the Jacobs School has caused a problem.
We don't budget just an operational budget, we budget a total budget. If you look at the budget, go through the budget presentation, we have an operational portion, and then we have fixed costs. And whatever happens in those fixed costs drives what we have left and available for operational, because we can't not pay our health insurance cost, we can't not pay our pension cost, we can't not pay our debt cost. Those are the first things that are calculated as cost and obligations that must be met. So the first thing you do on the budget is you figure out what you're gonna have from a revenue stream and what reasonably you can expect to spend. Then you take off of that, against, you charge against those revenues, those things that you cannot avoid, you have to pay. And what you have left is what you have available for operations. So when you increase your debt costs, that's gonna hit your operational costs, because the revenue side is what drives it.
Unless, as you would with a normal capital expense, with debt, an override or a debt exclusion or something else. We did do that with the Jacobs School, and so we wound up paying all of that bond out of our operational budget.
No, they, you're right, people should, at the time when Jacobs School was started, perhaps the wisest strategy would have been to go for debt exclusion. It was not chosen at that time by the people that were around. I can't speak to that issue, but what I can say is, yeah, it would be great if you could get a debt exclusion for all 60 or 80 million dollars worth of dentifications out there. You know, maybe we'll try that. I don't think you're gonna get 60 or 80 million dollars worth of debt exclusion, all on the local taxpayer's base. These schools were billed basically 59% and 69%, so the local taxpayer thing, about 30 cents on the dollar, because there was a program to do that. There was not a similar program for town halls, so the entire cost will rest on the local taxpayer. The entire cost of seawalls, unless we can get grants, and if we were able to get one big grant, but the total value of all the grant money in the state for seawalls and dams was $20 million, and it was split in half, 10 million for seawalls, 10 million for our dams. We happen to get 2.7 of the 10. So that's not gonna be a solution set too long, because the other communities have figured that out on the post, and they pot up in their engineering. We were just good because we had our project ready to go, permitted and ready to go. So that's the problem, is some of the items that we have to do do not have the same program that the school buildings, and thank God the school building had that program, otherwise I don't think we could have afforded. That's the challenge. Okay, John Riley, last word.
And then I really do think we need to pick a date before we break. And, you know, I'm gonna leave that to the school committee, whatever date is best.
March 24th at 6 o'clock.
Is that on what, Monday or the week?
It's a Monday. We have a school committee meeting that night. You do it here?
On 24th? Okay.
Advisory board is on Monday nights.
What time?
They do theirs at 7:00. Capital planning is typically, their best night is typically Wednesday evening. Is there a Wednesday evening we could do? Is this a special duty night for this topic and only this topic? About March 26th?
Could I be in Florida?
Does that work with people?
What was the 24th at 6?
The advisory board is in the middle of their deliberation on town hall. They have scheduled a party.
26th, there's some school events going on. I was just told. Bye bird.
All right.
But, so that not everybody could...
Kind of events, or something that's gonna monopolize the building?
It's at Memorial School, but it's a band concert that involves all three schools.
So you gotta be there. Yeah, guys gotta be there. What is, what's the week before?
19th.
Yeah, how about Wednesday, the 19th?
How many in Florida is that?
I can't do it. Doc wants to have the meeting, so...
Pipe it in.
I'll be there.
You'll be there in spirit?
19th. Can't do it the 19th?
You shift into the day.
All right, yeah, I think they can do the 19th.
All right, 19th, 7 o'clock here. Everybody okay with that? Okay?
Okay, so the next joint meeting will be Wednesday, March 19th, 7 o'clock in this room.
I can't do that. It's not on my calendar, but I have a, I have another meeting that I, but I can't do it.
Well, Doc can't do it either, so you guys cancel each other out.
We just go forward with it, at least to get the information going and keep momentum, at least.
What's that?
David, okay.
Well, why can't we have it on the 24th, start of that like 5:30? And then, it's only gonna go a half hour.
Because a lot of people, I know there's other people that can't get back in town that early.
5:30?
I guess I'll leave it to the people who have to get back in town that early. Can you be back in town that early and do it at 5, 5:30 on the 24th?
Please don't.
I mean, I know it becomes problematic for some folks that are driving in from out of town. How about Thursday, the 20th?
Oh, that's, do you know?
Oh, that's, June, no, it's not, right?
You bring a cake.
I'll bring a cake. All right, no, Thursday, 20th, no takers?
How about tomorrow night?
How about being quiet?
Couldn't get it posted, couldn't get it posted in time. Well, well, along those lines, let's see, what is today? Today is the 5th. What about Wednesday, the 12th? Next Wednesday. Next Wednesday work for everybody?
Conference.
Yes, Jim. Well, we don't have to be at that.
During the afternoon.
All right, so Wednesday, the 12th. We're not gonna ever get a perfect date, but it's better to get a date than no date.
But we need the people.
All right, all right. Raise your hand if you can be here.
Wednesday, the 12th?
I'm not sure yet.
Wednesday.
It's not mine, I don't, the high school night conference is not that night, it's Jacobs of tomorrow.
No.
It's afternoon conferences, so I think-
What is it?
Is it okay with the 6:00 you?
Yeah.
So, Wednesday, the 12th?
And actually, we have bingo for books.
That what?
Bingo for books.
So, after this, we'll all go play bingo.
So, 7:00 PM, Wednesday, the 12th, basically two components to that evening, a present-
Can we start earlier? Can we start at 6:30?
Well, I think, again, part of it is getting people back from, you know, like other folks.
Phil?
Well, we have that report you were talking about.
Well, I was gonna say is, is, I don't think it is.
It is on the website.
Is it? I think, well, to make it easy, if, could you email me the report tomorrow, and then we'll distribute it to everybody?
Here.
Okay, but we can, okay, well, but, I just say, I couldn't find it easy, okay? Stay cool.
You miss me too.